Says we're live on.
Yep, you're good.
All right, all the board of aldermen work session to order. First item is the roundabout discussion. Chuck, who's?
So let me just give you just a quick background. And I think the board already knows that the city and Greyhawk have entered into a development agreement where the city is to provide the design and engineering for a roundabout at Old F Highway or Old Jefferson Highway and Falcon Drive and Bridgeport. We agreed to provide the engineering and the developer will construct the roundabout when after that's done. The city went through a selection process earlier this summer and we selected the firm of Tran Systems to provide the design for the roundabout. Tonight, we have Jennifer Penfield, Todd Tomlin and John Zimmerman from Tran Systems to present. Basically, what we're doing is presenting you with the concept drawing for the roundabout and a recommended detour plan for the project. We're presenting them for your comment and your review and public comment. So with that, I will turn it over to Jennifer and I think she has control. So if she wants to share a screen or something, she can do that.
Hey Chuck, one quick question before we get started. Do you know when the development agreement was, what the date was on that?
It was October of 2017.
Jennifer, it's all yours.
Hi, everyone. Here's our preliminary concept drawing for the roundabout. You can kind of see the overall layout and how it connects into Old Jefferson Highway along the north, south direction and Falcon Drive is part of Greyhawk at the Lake subdivision on the west leg and the east leg connecting into Bridgeport Drive. So basically, we've laid this out to where we have six foot sidewalks all around the roundabout, 10 foot wide crosswalks. And the surrounding sidewalks we're tying into are, this side is five foot wide. In the development and this side, they're kind of variable, but generally about four feet wide. So we're going to take our six foot wide sidewalks all around as far as we can and then connect kind of taper down into these five foot wide sidewalks over here. And on the east, the southeast corner along Bridgeport Drive, we have about a four foot wide sidewalk here. So we're going to extend this six foot wide all the way around to where we can tie in at this location at the driveway. And then on this side, we'll continue the six foot wide sidewalk to this driveway and then so there's no need to taper there. Let's see. And our roundabout will be constructed of eight inch thick concrete with nine inch aggregate all throughout the approaches and center. And we'll have a stamped stone concrete pattern in the truck apron and also in the splitter islands as shown here. The question is kind of, as far as the splitter island right here, we've decided to make that flush with the pavement. Just because lots 169 and 170 here are kind of limited here with access. So we feel like putting with the sidewalk location and crosswalk location where they are here, we'll have to work with Alet, the developer's engineer to place driveways, you know, where they'll fit on the west sides of these lots. But it looks like it'll work pretty well with this type of layout. At this point, we'll just need to work with them to adjust right away accordingly. The sidewalks are placed five feet back from the back of curb. So we'll have a buffer. So yeah, we'll just need to coordinate with them to update their right away along these two lots here to accommodate the sidewalk. As far as right away easements, this is the thick yellow line shown here along Old Jefferson Highway. See if I can zoom in a little on this corner. Yeah. So the right away here, it's just a little bit of an overlap. So we'll probably need to acquire a little more on this this corner here. And the sidewalk is all able to fit within existing right away. So we'll just likely need to get a temporary easement and as far as this corner, we'll, we'll need right away to accommodate the widening here.
Okay.
As far as utilities go, we're showing the developments waterline kind of coming along the north side of Falcon Drive here and then going up here to the north, crossing with casing and then coming back down to tie in. So our existing waterline, which runs along the west side of Old Jefferson Highway, kind of the light blue line there. We'll need to look at lowering that a bit just to accommodate the pavement and subgrade here within. So that'll be something we'll be designing as well as the overhead power line, which is the red, the red line here. So the issue with that is that it's, it's just a little bit on the low side. So we'll need to look at possibly raising that. And one other possible utility to be investigated is the force main that's coming through here. So we'll need to look at that a little more, see if that needs to be adjusted.
Jennifer, what's the design speed through the roundabout?
Well, it's 45 miles per hour along Old Jefferson Highway and then we'll have 15 miles per hour through the roundabout. And so, yeah, now, right now we're working on preliminary plans and we'll have those by the end of January and final plans by end of June. So as far as the developers' schedule goes after that.
And did you have a detour plan you wanted to show too?
Well, I guess so. For now, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Todd to talk a little bit about the geometry a little further.
Hope everyone can hear me all right. Thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, we looked at, well, anytime you're looking at a roundabout location, there's an infinite number of possibilities on exactly how this layout can be done based on the size of the circle that you pick, the location of the circle and how you want to do your tie-ins to the existing facilities as well as the, the new one off to the west. Based on, on my experience, I've been doing roundabouts since 2001. So I've had quite a bit of experience done nearly 200 of these in various locations. And based on the design vehicle that we've discussed on this project, which is a full-size semi tractor trailer on Jefferson going north, south, the WB67 in engineering terms, we can accommodate that through movement going north and south, and then a smaller semi truck, more of a moving van size or a smaller moving van size WB50. We can accommodate going in all directions throughout the roundabout. And in order to accommodate those types of vehicles and control the speeds, which is one of the safety features of roundabouts, we ended up with a 100 foot diameter circle, which is that outside white line that you see kind of going around the outer side of the circle. I don't think I can point to that Jennifer, so maybe you can. But it's the inscribed circle diameter. It's that outside edge of the circulatory roadway. Yep, that area. We've set that at 100 foot diameter. And then you'll notice that a lot of our exit legs are relatively tangential to that circle. They come out relatively straight. But we have good deflection on the approach sides of the roundabout where we deflect the drivers to the left. And we do that because the critical factor of roundabout design and safety is to control speeds on the entry to the roundabout. And by pushing those entry lengths to the left, we achieve that deflection with a smaller diameter circle and allows us to take up less right of way and less impacts to the surrounding properties. That also gives us a nice, smooth driving path. We control the speed. There's a fastest path analysis that's done. It's kind of a technical evaluation of a roundabout. It's not anything more than a theoretical speed that you can drive through the roundabout. And for single lane roundabouts, that should be 25 miles per hour or less on the entry speed. And by deflecting it to the left and using the 100 foot diameter circle, we're able to achieve that, which means we have good speed control on our entries. And then we have a more tangential exit, which allows for a smoother driver path on the exit. That makes it a very efficient roundabout in terms of bringing people in at controlled speeds. We want to match the entry speeds very closely with the circulating speeds in order to maximize the safety of the intersection. And that's what we've done by deflecting those approaches to the left. So then we just try to tie back as quickly as we can, keeping those exits tangential helps improve visibility down on the downstream legs of the roundabout to the crosswalks, allowing any pedestrians that are waiting to cross to be more readily visible to the folks leaving the circle. And then that enhances the safety for pedestrians around the intersection. So key features, good speed control, we achieve that, good visibility, we achieve that, smooth driving paths for all of the approaches and exits. And we achieve that. And then accommodation of the design vehicle. So all of those things combined make this a very safe layout. And as you probably already know, roundabouts are the safest form of accurate intersection control we have in our engineers toolbox. So this should be a very well functioning, high capacity roundabout. That's very safe for the traveling public to use and, and will accommodate larger vehicles through the intersection. I know that's kind of a technical run through, so I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have about why we did what we did on the geometry or any other comments you may have about the layout of the roundabout.
So we'll go ahead and pause on this drawing before we go to the detour to for the board and public to ask questions.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I do have a couple of questions. So when you're looking at this picture and if you're going north on Jefferson Highway, there's a house right there at the end of Bridgeport. It would be on the north side. What can, what can we do because of the lights that are going to be shining directly into their house? Is there something that the HOA can do? Can we plant something to kind of defer the lights? That's the only house that's really going to be affected by this.
Yeah, you could certainly do some screenings, obviously. Any kind of a deciduous tree would be very ineffective in the winter months when the leaves are off the tree. But you could certainly do some sort of an evergreen screening or something along those lines or hedges. Those kinds of things can help with some of the light impacts. I think it's important to note though, that as you're coming northbound, you never really turn far enough to direct the headlights directly at that house unless you're turning into the subdivision on Bridgeport or coming off of Falcon Drive, making a left to go north, then the lights would shine towards that home. Obviously, as the subdivision on the west side develops further, there will be a couple of additional houses on those two lots in the future as well. And so headlights can be an issue, but you have to recall also that as you have a full intersection and people are making right turns and left turns in and out of the subdivision, the similar situation happens with vehicles shining lights on the adjacent homes. So it does get exacerbated a little bit by this type of a layout at a roundabout because you do have better angles coming in the roundabout that shine off to the sides a little bit more. But also we found that it's, it's generally not problematic. Any different than it would be in a normal turning intersection where the house gets headlights flashing by it periodically as people make turning movements. So vegetative screenings can help with that is, is the predominant thing.
Okay. Well, then we'll probably just, once it gets done, we can always just talk to the homeowners and see if they're having an issue with it before the HOA, you know, does anything. Cause if it's not a problem, then it's no big deal.
Yeah. One of the goals is to maintain that north, south traffic flow as straight as possible.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
Anything else?
I do have a couple of other questions, but it's not about the geometry. It's about the property lines. So that would probably be best for later. Yeah. Cause it's nothing to do with them. It's just with the, the property lines and when it comes to the HOA's property lines and the, with the city, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Jennifer, this is Chuck Sol. If you want to give me a call anytime at the office here, or we can meet anytime out there, we can kind of look at that. I, I know what you're thinking, probably so. And you'll see with the detour, we are going to ask the HOA for an easement so we can get the detour across that lot. So we can get access during construction to the neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's fine. I just wanted to make sure for our like mowing purposes, because we mow all the way to the road. We mow those ditches there. So my only thing is if there's something that we're not supposed to be mowing now, we've got a new company coming in to do our mowing next year. So I just want to make sure that when this all gets said and done, the HOA knows exactly what we're supposed to do. Not that anybody's arguing this. And yeah, when it comes to the detours, you just let us know and we can come in and you can show us what you guys need to do and it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. And if, and if you've got any questions on property lines or that, that piece of property there that the HOA owns, just give me a holler and be more than happy to meet you out there. Maybe when it's warmer.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, it'll be better. Okay. Thank you.
The aldermen don't have anything. Let's go ahead and go to the detour plan.
Okay, here's our, our detour plan. It'll consist of two phases. The shoe fly phase, which is, we'll be able to access Bridgeport Drive while the north legs, the west legs and the south legs are being constructed. So Bridgeport Drive can be accessed from the south with the shoe fly, probably gravel. It can also always be throughout the whole project access from 180th Street down Old Jefferson Highway and through Porter Drive, just a little bit to the north. So I had a Google Maps up here. So this neighborhood will always be accessible throughout the whole project this way. But when we have construction along Bridgeport, that'll be closed. And then we'll have this detour shown here with the, with the dark yellow line. And we'll have signs kind of directing down to the south, down to First Street and then back up 169 and then east along 180th and then south back, back on the porter. So it's a bit of a, a long detour, but a shorter phase compared to the other phase.
So Jack and Chuck, when do you think is this going to overlap with that 169 project at all? They should be done by the time this is done with engineering, right? 169, 188?
188. That's a 22 project. So depending on when the developers wanting to bid this, this roundabout may get done before 188th project even begins.
Okay. How long is this detour needed to be in place? Do we think?
So the idea behind the shoe fly alderman chaveller is that we would minimize the inconvenience. We'd like to close the entire intersection down and use that shoe fly for three quarters of the project. And then all you'd have to do is tie in Bridgeport after that. So you know, if it's a 90 day construction and you're probably three to four weeks on Bridgeport, that you would have the longer detour. But then the other legs could potentially be open while you're working on Bridgeport.
Any other questions? Okay. Chuck, do you have anything else or Jack or any of the engineers?
No, unless, um, you know, the neighborhood or the developer has any other questions or comments, we're going to have Tran Systems proceed to final design so we can get this project wrapped up.
I think silence is golden, Chuck, I think.
Okay. We'll proceed with this layout and this design. And I want to thank Tran Systems for being available tonight and presenting this board in the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
It's your time.
Thanks Jennifer for attending as well for the HOA. I know it's important to keep them updated.
Yes. Thank you guys for letting me join. If you guys need anything from the HOA on this or whatever, I'm the, I'm the president of it. So you just contact me and we can get whatever we need done.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, now it's Stephen's turn. He does. You've been here for a month now, right? So you should, this should be great.
About two months.
All right. Don't screw it up.
All right. Can everyone see the, the slide, the slideshow here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. All right. Well, it's a pleasure to come to you tonight and present the fiscal year 20 budget review for the city of Smithville. The data that we'll look at tonight as reflective of our fiscal year 2020, which started on November 1st, 2019 and took us through to the end of October 31st. So we'll start off here with an examination of the general fund, the city of Smithville's main operating fund. And just kind of a general comment, you know, this year with the arrival of COVID-19 in March, it has really presented a lot of financial and operational challenges to, to our local governments across the entire United States and especially coming to Smithville from the city of Alatha, there was a real scramble around March and April to see how our revenues are and expenditures would, would turn out with all the uncertainty. But it's really good here. When, when you start looking at the initial roll up of revenues, especially in the general fund, it's really good to see the amounts that we've brought in for fiscal year 20. And we'll look at some line item highlights here on, on the second slide, but you know, just in such a challenging year where sales tax and some of the major operating revenues for our funds that helped support our services, where there was a lot of uncertainty, we, we saw a really good performance in those categories and we'll look at those in a second. But overall, when we look at the general fund, we started fiscal year 20 with about $3.7 million in our beginning cash balance. As we move through the year, we forecasted revenues to be about 4.5, as you can see there in that cell. And we finished the year with 4.7 in revenues. That gave us a delta of about $200,000 over our forecast in actuals. Expenditure wise, we did finish under our forecast. We forecasted about 5.2 in expenditures and we expended about 4.9. So that's a delta of about $280,000 under the forecast. The forecasted ending cash balance was about $3 million and with our actuals, that puts us at our ending balance of 3.5 for the end of fiscal year 20. Part of this also includes a look ahead to fiscal year 21. And so in, in 2021, we budgeted to begin with about $3.2 million in our beginning fund balance, but we will enter that year with a little bit higher cash balance, which creates a positive delta of about $400,000. When we look at ahead for revenue in fiscal year 21, we'll start to nail down our projections by the midpoint or even earlier. But for now, we're projecting revenues to budget of about 4.6. The main difference in projected expenditures comes in, in the, with the addition of the $125,000 that is going to be applied to the general fund per the budget amendment. And so you'll see that, that includes $20,000 to complete our comprehensive plan and another $105,000 for the construction of streetscape phase two. When we put those revenues and expenditures together, that gives us a projected ending fund balance of about $2.5 million, which is about $260,000 to the good over fiscal year 21. So that puts us in a, a good position as we look ahead to the rest of fiscal year 21. We can advance the slide there. I keys aren't working. Just a second here. Oops. Sorry about that. There we go. I think it froze up. You still with me, correct?
Yep, we're still here.
Something happened there. So let's look at the general fund highlights by the line items here. And really it starts off with some of the biggest performers in 2020. Sales tax performed very well despite this year in which we had a pandemic. We budgeted about $1.1 million in sales tax and we brought in about 1.2. And that gives us a delta of about 175. One thing I'll be looking into a little bit more here as I get into this role is a lot of our vendor detail. But I think with, you know, one thing we definitely certainly saw in Alatha as we looked at our vendor details is a, is a major growth in grocers and home improvement stores and some of those places that really shined on the retail scene while we saw decline in restaurants and those sorts of activities. So a little bit of that whole factor may have affected Smithville, especially having the price chopper giving a boost in sales tax. The use tax trends there, we budgeted about $340,000 for use tax and brought in 435. That is really indicative of consumer trending towards more and more online purchases, especially those working from home, making those purchases online, whereas they were unable to go to the store. So it's not surprising to see that use tax really grow versus the budget. Looking at some of the franchise fees, the telecom franchise fees, we've seen this trend downward year over year, which is really because of the removal of the home phone in, in people's homes, turning that in for cell phones. So we pick up those franchise fee revenues from having those home phones and those landlines in those homes. The electric franchise fees performed over budget by about $70,000 and that'll tend to fluctuate with the temperatures. As we get hotter, warmer months in the summertime, that will raise our electricity bills and our franchise fees. The building permits finished pretty close to budget there, being about $11,000 off. And we had good activity through the year. The court fines did fall below the budget of $167,000. We brought in about 144. One thing to keep in mind is with stay at home orders and shutdowns earlier this year in March and April and early May, we had a lot less traffic on the roads and, and that likely leads to less traffic violations. So it's not surprising to see that decline a little bit. And the last one here is the, the interest income. We budgeted $150,000 in 2020 and our actuals were just over $100,000. So that's a, a negative delta of about $50,000. And kind of digging into that line item, seeing what was going on, it's really a result of, of lower interest rates on cash that we have at the bank. And those interest rates really dropped significantly in mid to late March when the pandemic really took hold and, and the markets went down. So in your staff reports, you'll see we have some charts that do some comparisons on revenue and our interest income over last year's actuals and dropped by almost $100,000. And it's really a case of those interest rates falling. Looking, oh, there, looking at our expenditures for the general fund, we had savings and capital improvement projects. And some of those savings were moving on to fiscal year 21 through the budget amendment. We did have some additional expenditures in the parks department with our repairs and our maintenance for some restroom repairs that weren't budgeted for, include some painting and repairs to restroom renovations. And then looking at a couple of other line items here, our training and travel expenses were significantly reduced this year, really caused by the pandemic. People not going to conferences and going to those trainings. And then our recreation league expenses were also lower as a result of not holding. And then our recreation league expenses were also, uh, lower as a result of not holding that programming due to the pandemic. Next, we'll take a look at our capital projects fund. Um, looking at the history of the capital projects fund, uh, this fund was the recipient of, of bond proceed, proceeds from, uh, voter approved, uh, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen general obligation debt. And so over the course of nineteen and twenty, we've been spending those proceeds on capital improvement projects. Uh, we began fiscal year twenty with about one point nine million dollars, um, in cash. And then as we moved through this year, uh, we did expect to receive, um, an RTP grant, uh, reimbursement for our Main Street Trail. Um, that will be something that we'll look to receive in fiscal year twenty-one and eventually have on a, a budget amendment. And that's why you see a delta there on your revenues row between your forecasts and your actual for revenue. On the expenditure side, uh, we forecasted to spend about one point eight million and we spent about seven hundred thousand dollars. And the difference there really comes down to, um, not spending all the money for our Main Street Trail project. And so at the bottom there in some bullets, um, we've made some notes for you that shows, uh, we are pushing those budgets to fiscal year twenty-one. That allowed us to end the year with a much higher cash balance than we projected. But as you see, as you move down into fiscal year twenty-one, uh, when we move those budget amendments, um, over and put those budgets in place, we will spend, um, that fund down and will actually anticipate it to spend it below negative. One of the reasons, um, we have a negative, uh, balance there is because of, uh, additional, uh, construction costs and, and contract additions to the Main Street Trail. Um, so in talking with Cynthia about how we can address that, we'll look to, um, shore up this account by using, um, additional revenues from capital improvement sales tax or transportation sales tax. A couple of possible ways to offset these additional expenses.
And I'll just jump in real quickly there. This was not, we knew that these funds would come to an end. This is the proceeds from the, the bonds. So that fund will, will go away as we finish those projects and they are, um, enhanced by those, those other funds.
Yeah. Looking at the capital improvement sales tax fund, um, this was another fund that, um, in terms of the performance of the fund, benefited from, uh, good sales tax activity, um, out there in our, in our brick and mortar, in our retail stores. Um, so looking at our beginning balance of three hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty and looking at our forecasted revenues versus what we actually received, uh, this fund performed quite well and we received about seventy thousand dollars more than what we forecasted. Um, expenditure wise, we had a little bit of savings in this fund. Um, and that really is a result of not, uh, completing, um, the streets, the, uh, the portions of this fund's money that goes to pay for streetscape phase two. And we have that noted there at the bottom of the slide with the bullet. Um, you can see the difference is about two hundred and forty-three thousand on the expenditure delta for twenty. So as we move down, uh, another note I wanted to say is if you are looking at the board report, uh, we did do a, uh, transposition error on the beginning cash balance. I apologize about that. Um, but the, these numbers here are correct on our fiscal year twenty-one. Those, those numbers are just a little bit different on the board report. So, um, set that, setting that aside, looking at fiscal year twenty-one, uh, we do carry that higher beginning cash balance versus our budget. But as we work through the year, um, the two hundred and forty-three thousand dollar budget amendment, um, for streetscape phase two, when we add that to our expenditures, um, that brings that cash balance, uh, quite a bit closer to what we budgeted for ending in fiscal year twenty-one. It gives us a positive delta for about seventy thousand dollars. Looking at the debt service fund, um, it is really an in and out fund that helps, uh, pay for, um, general, general obligation debt payments and service our debt payment schedule. Um, so the revenues and expenditures that, that went through this fund, um, really were, were right on the money for what we were forecasting. Um, we had revenues of about five hundred and fifty thousand coming to this front, from, uh, capital improvement sales tax via transfer. And we expended those to pay for, uh, debt service. And so next year, um, we'll, uh, begin with a really a, a very close cash balance to what we've budgeted. Um, I may have seen this in the past where we just have a slight difference of a few dollars. And moving on, looking at the transportation sales tax fund, just like capital improvement sales tax, this fund benefited from, um, really good sales tax performance in twenty twenty. We started this, uh, year with a beginning cash balance of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And again, there we brought in about seventy thousand more dollars than what was budgeted in revenue, all from that, uh, sales tax performance. On the expenditure side, we did have, uh, us, uh, about a two hundred thousand dollar difference in what we were forecasting to spend at the midpoint versus what actually was spent. And when you look at that fund, you see a lot of savings in, uh, repairs and maintenance and those line items and in some tools and supplies. Um, so together with, uh, lower expenditures and a little bit better revenue than, than forecasted, we're adding about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to fund balance. We do have some expenditures that we're looking to add there in fiscal year twenty-one via budget amendment. And that's about two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Some of that includes, uh, for, um, the design of the Bridgeport Roundabout, which we were just discussing, about a hundred thousand dollars for that. And then construction and design for streetscape phase two of a hundred and seventy thousand. And when we add those expenditures in, uh, to what was already budgeted, um, that brings our ending cash balance, um, pretty close to what was budgeted for fiscal year twenty-one with a positive delta of about fifty thousand dollars there at the bottom. Looking at our combined water and wastewater fund, um, this is our, one of our proprietary or enterprise funds where all the revenues that we, uh, bring into this fund for water and wastewater support all the expenses. So it's really key with this fund that, um, we take a good look at those revenues because those are specifically supporting all the expenses. Um, the trend in this fund has been a, a decrease in, uh, cash as we've spent it on capital improvement projects, making those infrastructure improvements. In fiscal year twenty, we started with about a five point five million dollar cash balance. Uh, we brought in revenues that were extremely close to what we forecasted, about twenty thousand dollars to the good there. And then expenditures of about one point four less than what we forecasted. And primarily that's due to, um, not completing all the, the projects that were set aside. And we'll be moving those, um, expenditures to fiscal year twenty-one via budget amendment. That allowed us to end this year with about four point five in our ending cash balance for fiscal year twenty. When we start fiscal year twenty-one, we do start with that higher cash balance than what we projected. Uh, but when we put in those budget amendments of about one point two million dollars, um, that kicks up the expenditures and brings our cash balance a little bit closer in line to what we've budgeted. Um, it still puts us about four hundred thousand dollars projected over, uh, what we budgeted for fiscal year, um, twenty-one. And with this fund, um, you know, staff have had a lot of discussion about, uh, our revenue impact fees, reviewing, uh, user fees. Um, the board has, uh, looked at our, our rate studies with Raffatellus to see what kind of rate changes we need to make. And we started those changes back in twenty eighteen. Um, so there's a lot going on in this fund to, uh, continue to ensure that we can get our infrastructure, um, in, in good shape, make the needed improvements and, and make sure we can do that from a financial standpoint. Um, and then, you know, in regards and discussions with Cynthia and, um, Piper Sandler, we've had discussions about, uh, the refinancing of debt and, and debt issuance for the South Interceptor, uh, hundred and forty-fourth Street Loop Station project. So there's a lot, uh, that to address in this fund as we move forward. Um, and so those, uh, those infrastructure improvements, uh, have to be paid for in the right way. And then our last one we'll review here tonight in our recap is the sanitation fund. This is really a, an in and out fund for, um, the trash service charges that we, um, uh, are paid for by our, our residents and, and those revenues help us pay for the contract to, uh, Waste Corporation America to provide that trash service. We began this, uh, year with about thirty-seven thousand dollars in cash balance. Brought in revenues, uh, very close to forecast and had a, a little bit less than expenditures and allowed us to put about seventeen thousand dollars into the, uh, fund balance for this fund. Coming into fiscal year twenty-one, we're about twenty-three thousand over where, uh, we budgeted for beginning cash. You do see an increase in the revenues, which, uh, does correlate to the increase in the, in the trash charge and the schedule fees, um, starting in January of twenty twenty-one. Uh, you see that change in the revenues, uh, uh, from eight thirty to projected of eight ninety. And then on expenditures, those also go up as that contract becomes, um, more expensive. And so together, um, our projected ending cash balance should be somewhere around sixty thousand dollars at this point. And about twenty-three thousand above, uh, what we budgeted. Um, that really concludes our recap for tonight and, um, you know, with the staff report and the financial update, it'd be open to, um, trying to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Steven. Anybody have any comments, questions?
If there are no board comments, I would just like to take, to take a moment to thank Steven. Um, his presentation, I think, was very thorough, um, and informed. And if you'll recall, Steven was, um, we're, we're about five weeks into his time here. Um, you know, Steven was not involved in, um, Steven, any of, you started in October, so you had just a tiny, tiny bit of expenditure time in twenty twenty fiscal year. So he has come on board and immersed himself in this and really learned the budget, um, and has, has done a terrific job. I'm looking forward to moving into twenty twenty-one when he really knows what the funds are and where the bathroom is and, and everything. Um, he's, he's done a terrific job.
I will say that Steven's presentation and dialogue was much easier to understand.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, we, so I mean, I, I want to try to set up, um, charts and tables that are easy to understand and make sense and, um, you know, the use of color and, and just things that are easier to follow. Um, so, you know, if you ever have any feedback, um, just let me know, um, and anything that's helpful. You know, I, I like to hear that. So.
Yeah, I've, I've, uh, Cynthia and Nikki and, and I know Melissa have heard me say it and our finance committee meetings, we gotta have it color coded so we can see it quickly. So appreciate it. Just make sure Chuck doesn't go over budget.
We'll keep an eye on him.
That's the one rule. Watch, watch Chuck.
And, and they're taking, it's multiple of us that have to do that. So just so you're aware.
Hey, the last thing on the agenda, on the regular agenda is going over the budget.
I know. They have concrete, not bricks, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the brick, it, it fades and then it looks pinky and so.
Green face. Uh, yeah, can we make it, can we, can we dye the concrete green? So it's, you know, green.
Like grass?
Green infrastructure.
We can do it however you want.
Yeah, no, I'm, you know, it looks good. Um, yeah, just no chain link, man. No chain link. I'll get with that expense. All right. Any of the other comments? We got about fourteen minutes till our next meeting. We could probably, well, we have, do have some annexations and stuff, right? So we can't start early. Right. Looking through. Yeah. So you, uh, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and then we're on the same Zoom, Linda or a different one? All right, Marv's got his hand up. Same one. Go ahead.
Now you say so.
Yeah, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks for the alert. And all those in favor of a journey and say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll see you guys in about fourteen minutes. We'll stay the same, stay on the Zoom.
Nice background, Chuck.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna go help throw some trash out of the apartments above the thing here. Linda, in case you're wondering what the noise was, they're emptying the apartments above the coffee shop right now and did the dumpster in the alley.
That's what that was. Okay.
Like a Santa here already? I ran outside.